Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, July 27th, 2020, regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins.
Here.
Councillor Segler.
Here.
Councillor Pop.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Vreeland.
Here. Consent agenda. Consent agenda is kind of long today, as if everybody, Becky doesn't really need to read it unless somebody wants them to, otherwise, does anybody want anything removed from it? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councillor Zins, is there support?
All support.
Support.
Support by Councillor Segler. Roll call, please.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Egler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland.
Yes. The reason she switched that around, the mayor is supposed to vote last, so in case of a tiebreaker, so we're gonna, if everybody's wondering why I'm going last, that's the way it's supposed to be, so we're just gonna try that, so. Guest citizen forum, ask, is there anybody on that wants to talk? It's a guest, I don't see anybody on there as guests. We'll move on, reports from staff. Recreation Golf Arena, Supervisor West.
The golf course is going well, clubhouse remodel is all done, it turned out really nice. We're just working on a second coat on the roof, the roof coating, which we did one last year and we have to do one this year, so. Otherwise then, the building's pretty much done. Got through our couple tournaments this weekend. Nothing really on the horizon out there, other than just regular golf. And the arena still, that's still a ways away yet, so. Other than that, not much.
Okay, thank you. Library Director, Sue Sowers.
We had a third bingo, drive-in bingo at City Hall, and that worked really well, having it in our own parking lot. Our hotspots, we have seven of them, are now ready to be checked out by the public, just that you need to be 18 or older. They can be checked out for a weekend of time, and we've tested them out in various situations, driving in the car, as far out as to well down to the cities, backing around, and had a signal the whole way. It's been tested out at the campground, it's been tested at a couple of different cabins and out on the lakes, in a boat, so. They work really well, so anybody in the public in 18 and older can check those out for a weekend at a time, and with one renewal. This is our last week of summer reading, and it's been going pretty well, considering. So I just wanted to remind everybody that's participating to turn in their documentation by the end of day Friday, and our drawing for prizes will be on Monday. And then in August, we are planning on doing two drive-in movies. The first bears, planning to schedule for August 6th. And then the second one, we're planning on August 20th, pending, they have to talk to Wade about that yet, to get permission for the parking lot. And check and make sure we have everything that we need to go ahead with that. That's it.
Thank you.
Sue, I've got a question. I've had a couple people bring it to my attention. I understand that the library is taking care of the electronic board, the new sign.
Yes.
And I've had a couple people ask if there can be a longer pause between the new messages coming up? Because they, you don't really get a chance to read it, and the new ones popping up.
Possibly. There's possibly a way to do that, I don't know how yet, truthfully, but I hear it both ways. Some people say they would like it to go slower, and other people say if it went any slower, they wouldn't see multiple messages. They'd only see one or two. So I guess, I'm not sure, that's something I have to look into, I'm aware of it, but I don't know how to do that just yet.
Okay. I did stop in the parking lot at the arena, did want to go through a couple of the messages. And, you know, I think I'm a fairly fast reader, but I had difficulty getting through before it flipped to the next message, so.
Yeah, it's, it's really a work in progress, so that's good to know, and it's good to get the feedback, so it is something that I am looking into, but I, I'm sure there's a way to do it, I just don't know how right now.
Okay, just wanted to pass it along to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else for Sue? Public Works Supervisor, Kenny Stensinger.
Yeah, everything at Public Works is going good. The street project is coming along, it's in some respects ahead of schedule. As you can see, on 200 block of Andover, the curb and gutter has all been done, and driveway aprons, that wasn't actually slated to take place until August. So since that subcontractor had an opening in their schedule, they got that, which is actually a jump. Couple other things are, you know, little curveballs that have slowed things down, but they got right back on track, so. All in all, I think even with the few rainstorms we've had recently, they're right on track. Maybe if Emily's on later, she can give an update on that, but I think I think that, that project's going well. Getting back to the sign, Dan Furry was able to make it there this past weekend. Got the other electric feed pulled in, and it's now hooked up, so. Sue, at any time you would like to, I never had a chance to call you at this afternoon, but anytime you'd like to crank it back up to the auto brightness or dimming feature, we'll see if it stays on track. Other things, we've just been getting other, a few other projects. The Dog Pound, there was some, you know, work that needed to be done out there, some rehab work, we've got quite a bit of work done out there in the last week or two. We've got the trail down to Sandy Beach is complete, we're just gonna have the kids spruce it up with a little trailer rocks along the edges or whatever, but that's complete. So just finishing up a few projects like that, baseball fields, everything like that's going good, and then I've been just in touch with several contractors and whatnot regarding some upcoming projects. Campground bathroom, as well as, you know, other projects, we have slated the City Hall project, etc. I see they're on the agenda, so I can talk about them when the time comes, if you'd like.
Yep.
That's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Director, Melanie Homestead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, nothing too much to report. Last month, June, we had 93 runs. As of today, we're at 94 runs, and we still have four days left in the month, so I'm, well, we already beat last month, it's a new record. Last record was set last year with 91 runs, so we're starting to see an increase in ambulance calls here. Um, I think I have $8 left to spend on my first grant that I received. Which I think is good, because it's kind of tough to find PPE and spend the money, but eight bucks left for that first one. I've started on using the second grant only for salaries, I have a third of that used, still have one untouched grant, $17,000. Um, starting to price out new ambulances, we've put one in the budget, we haven't had our third ambulance here for a couple weeks now. That's at Lundgren's, getting repaired, so we've been unable to take any extra transfers, and actually we've missed quite a few transfers out of Northern Pines, because we're already on transfers, so they've had to call elsewhere to get other transfers out. Our EMT that we just hired has started training. She, her background check and all her physical and drug testing was done, so she started training. She should be on her own here shortly. I think the other, the medics that we hired are getting all their stuff done this week, early next week, so they should be on the schedule soon for some training. I think that's about it.
Do you have any, Kenny, do you know any update on that ambulance situation?
I touched base with Lundgren's last Wednesday or Thursday, and they had just got the parts, and we're gonna get it scheduled back in for early this week. I had a couple day job for them, so I was anticipating a phone call today, I did not get one. I'm hoping tomorrow, maybe we'll find out more.
Were they replacing the turbo?
No, they did all kinds of tests, and everything led them to believe the turbo was not bad. They're blaming it on the, the EGR valve, which we changed, they changed again. That one plugged up again, they're blaming it now that the intake manifold had excessive soot in it that they could not clean. So they were also checking for head gaskets while they were pressure testing the coolant system for the head gaskets. A leak in the radiator reared its head, so it's getting a intake manifold and a radiator all at the same time, only because the two of them kind of overlap. You have to have the coolant drain to change the radiator, so they're doing them both at the same time. I, I questioned them over and over on whether or not they were confident, and all all things point to that, and, and they said yes, that's the only place they could go, was, was there for the repair. So I'm hoping to hear something soon.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Becky, anything, Becky?
I would just, a reminder too, not to forget Supervisor Barrett. But my report, filing for city offices opens tomorrow, that is on, what will be on the ballot in November. And we have a mayor opening two council seats that are four years, and one unexpired two-year term that will be, you'll be able to apply for. And we, anyone can call here, email us for that form and information, there's a $2 filing fee. And you just need to have it in by August 11th, so if anyone is interested in being, running for mayor, city council, just give us a call. And also, just an update on absentee voting is going well, we've only had a handful come in the office, most of it is by mail. But if anyone wants to come in and vote, we have a separate area for them, and we're cleaning and disinfecting, and we have masks, and we've only had a handful come in, but it's going very well. And that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Jacob, sorry I missed you.
That's all right. So we've been knocking through summer maintenance, most of the maintenance at the wastewater plant's complete. Construction has started down there, but they've been able to keep distance from us pretty good. They're starting to lay out where the filter building's gonna be for the mercury removal and all that. And then replaced a couple, or fixed a couple of curb stops on Suffolk before the road construction makes it that way. Kenny touched on the storm sewer construction, that's going well, I mean, we can see Joe out of there soon. Maybe a couple weeks, so that's going good. Couple of hiccups here and there, just stuff we didn't realize was in there, but we got it taken care of, and then looking at some big maintenance projects for the water plant, so. It's about all I got.
Okay. Mitch, anything from, from now, Mitch?
Mayor Council, just as far as agenda items. I did have a chance to review this revised preparedness plan due to the face coverings executive order that just came down. I reviewed the proposal from, for services from NTS for the project coming up, and also I, I reviewed the this Greider Construction Securities pledge in lieu of the retainage, that they want to put a securities pledge up. And I've reviewed all of that, all those items look fine, I don't have any problems with any of them, so they meet with my approval from a legal perspective, and those would be ready for your approval tonight. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? All right, we'll go down to reports from city councils. Councillor Zins.
Nothing tonight.
Councillor Segler.
Nothing for me either.
Councillor Pop.
Just a couple quick items, actually it's one, kind of an update on Blight, so. We dug back into the records, so the, the special garbage pickup that we did spring, it was a $600 flat fee for the pickup, and then the tonnage was 21,000, roughly a little, little bit over 21,000 pounds, and that's a three cents a pound, so that special pickup cost is about $1,250, so. I did put $5,000 in the budget last year, so there should be plenty room to, to do another pickup this fall, and I think the best thing would be to wait till all the road construction is done for that, and that way every residence can can partake that, that would like to, so. And we're just gonna focus in August here on Blight, we're gonna focus on trying to get some of these unusable, unlicensed vehicles, either towed or back into spec, so that's about it.
Okay, Councillor Peterson.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, and I don't either, we've got plenty on the agenda tonight, so. We're gonna jump down to old business. COVID-19 Fisherman's Point Campground, any, any update on the, on the campground? I see, I think Patty was on.
She's on, yeah.
Oh, there she is, okay. Dan, Patty, any update on the campground?
I can go first. I know I've visited with Patty and Al, I've been watching the reservations. You know, we're not, we're not totally full out there. I think things are going well, I did, I did have Betsy pull up some numbers for us. Looks like, as close as I can tell through the end of July last year, the revenue, we were at about 139,000. And this year, we're at about 107, so we're, we're down about 32,000 from last year. I guess I'm open to, to councillors' suggestions on what to do for the rest of the year. And I'll withhold my opinion till I hear from the other ones, because I was accused of swaying the council last month, so I'll go last this time.
I'll go first.
I can go first.
Oh, let's listen to Patty first, Brian. Patty, anything from you?
No, um, no, we're, we're just going along with whatever, whatever you guys feel is best, that, that will work for us. I do have one, well, I've had tons of calls, but I just had another call from a worker that was here all last year, he's coming back again, gonna be here for a month working. He would really like to get in here again. I told him I would bring it up again tonight for him. So that's about the only thing I really have, that, that someone was here with us last year, and, and would really like to be able to come in again, because he's gonna be working there.
Okay, just a quick question, Patty, are the showers still all closed?
Yes.
Okay.
He's got a contained unit, and he, he has a contained unit and does not need the showers.
Councillor Segler.
Okay, I think at this point, we could open it up, I mean, we've had numerous events around town with people from out of the area. I think at the campground, most people are, that are coming from out of the area are gonna socially distance themselves anyways from the rest of the campgrounds, you know, so I'm, I'm okay with opening it back up. That's my take.
Councillor Zins.
Yeah, I, I would go along with anything that the COVID team recommends, I don't have a problem either way. And I don't know what their response is, I think the shower should remain closed. But you know, to open it up outside the, the area, I guess I don't have a concern.
Councillor Peterson.
I actually did have concerns that there have been reservations allowed from out of town, or out of the school district area. I had an, my own personal issue where somebody hit my camper. And when I had called Patty and asked, you know, who was staying around me, so that I could maybe try to find, find out who did it. When she went to see who was staying in the site by me, it was under her name, so she didn't have any information to provide me. She said that sometimes they use their name as a default when they don't have an account, so I do kind of question that a little bit, if that's being done a lot to allow other people to come in from out of the area. I guess maybe it'd be a moot point if we decide tonight to allow others in the area, but there's been a lot, I've had a lot of complaints with people coming to me and asking, oh, you must have opened it up, because we saw people from, you know, a group from Moose Lake or Chisholm, or, you know, just things like that, that were happening, so I did have some concerns with that. I guess I still like what we're doing, I think it's been effective. And I think the safety is better than allowing people from all over to come in. That's just my thought.
And, and back to the, the default thing on the reservations. I've done five of them this year, and one of them I didn't catch, and that happened to be the one. When I make a reservation, if I type in the name and I type it in wrong or anything, it's not that they don't have a have a account, if I type it in wrong, it defaults to my name. And I caught all but the one of them, and so that's, that, they, they do have accounts, I haven't made anyone a reservation without them having an account here. I do know that they allow members of their family or friends to come in, and that I can't stop.
Going back to Councillor Zins's question about what's the COVID team, I do believe Boabik's campground is open to, to anybody, and that was approved by the COVID, COVID team, is that correct? Becky?
Right, I was just gonna report on that when everyone was done, being Boabik and High Lakes are the only, you know, cities with campgrounds. Boabik did open theirs up, and it, you know, the COVID team felt it was up to each individual city. And we, we went the route we did, and they went the route they did, but, you know, they didn't have a problem with it either way at the time.
Okay. Councillor Pop.
I basically have got mixed feelings, but for one thing, we do know for certain, and I've talked to Patty about this, and I've had calls from citizens, people are getting around the Masabi School District area resident, you know, in order to reside there, in order to reserve, they're either using somebody else's phone, or name, or address, or phone number, so we, we do have some people that are camping out there outside the area. The COVID thing has been going back up. The end of this, you know, I think we're seeing the repercussions from the 4th of July, the numbers have been going up, I haven't seen the numbers for today, but I don't think it's over with, and then the St. Louis County numbers have been going up, they've been consistently close to a double-digit number. If we moved at all on expanding it, I would only be in favor if we, we went to the, say, the tri-city areas to to open it up to maybe a 60-mile radius or whatever, I, I would not like to go any further than that, so.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I'll look for a motion, if somebody wants to make a motion to open it up, or with no motion, we'll leave it where it's at.
I'll make the motion, we open it up.
At what range, Brian?
I, I, I think whoever wants to camp there, I, I mean, we've, we've had golf tournaments, we have, where people are way closer together. We've had benefits, and I'm not, and I think that's all fine and dandy, I'm, I'm good with that, but I think we're trying to be hypocritical then on the campground side, where essentially, people are coming from out of the area, they're not necessarily gonna be hanging out with the campsite next to them, I think they're coming to spend some time outside and get away, or get away from their house to for a little break from COVID, so I think we open it up, that's my motion, open it up.
Okay.
And, and one, one thing with that, it could be self-contained units that didn't need showers.
Okay. Is there support? Is there support?
All support, yeah.
Support by Councillor Zins, to open it up to, to the general public. Any, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I will do a roll call, please.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
No.
Peterson.
No.
Mayor Vreeland.
No, you know, we did it this way tonight, huh? Well, I've got some mixed feelings on it too, I was, I was hoping my council would make the decision, but that's okay. St. Louis County finally hit 0.1% of the population's got it. And 0.1 of 0.1 of 0.1% has died from it, so. The, the numbers to, in my mind, are so low, I've been in the bars and restaurants this weekend. And if you're gonna catch COVID, you're gonna catch a lot better chance going into a bar or a restaurant than you are at a campground, so I'm gonna vote for the opening. I will vote yes to open the campground. Motion carries three to two. We'll move to city buildings, any update, anything new on city buildings?
I just added it on there, all city buildings are officially still closed in most cities. I just added it on there. Um, all city buildings are officially still closed in most cities east range and even broader than that. Uh, so I just added it on there for discussion if the council wanted to review that further.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on that? Going to the revised preparedness plan, uh, Governor Executive Order 20-81. The only real change in that, Becky, was that we added face
Face covering.
requiring, okay. Do we need a motion to, uh, to approve the change?
I would like a motion to approve, um, just for the record.
Can I get a motion to approve the, the, uh, change on the COVID-19 plan?
I'll make that.
Make the motion.
But I would like to see, uh, signage put at all city buildings, face masks required, included in that motion.
We're in the process of doing that, Counselor Pop.
Okay.
So the, there was a, the motion was made by Counselor Peterson, and Counselor Pop, you would second that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Support was from Counselor Pop. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. Okay, and then also under A, A is, Becky has got a, a start of a list of expenditures for the COVID money, and I know we're working on a bunch of others, so I think this was just for informational tonight for the council. Does the council have any questions on it? If not, uh, we'll move on. Anything else on COVID? Okay. If not, moving on to item 8B, Ranger Snowmobile ATV Club. Um, I, I noticed Roy's not back on, but I've been involved in this. Um, what this, what this resolution basically says is, once they get the trail that meets the ATV and snowmobile, uh, guidelines from the DNR, they get maintenance fees for them. So this is just a resolution we're passing tonight for the snowmobile club to get maintenance fees for when they groom it or grade it or whatever. So that's all this is about tonight, so. Maintenance and area recreational fees, so. Uh, just, we need a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Counselor Zins, support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Pop. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. The next item on their LCCMR presentation, I have a presentation at 2:15 on July 30th. We did make the first round of cuts for the 1.2 million upgrade. And this trail is from Boabik to Seven Beavers. It's replacing several bridges. Several bridges, culverts, and doing a bunch of dirtwork for it. So no money out of the city, but the city is the conduit for the grants, so. Um, I'll keep you posted if we, if we got that money. They're really trying to turn them all into ATV and snowmobile, so that's a big step in that direction, so. Last Thursday, item, item C, proposal for services consulting city engineers. The city's never had a city engineer in the past. I'm not in favor of it. I, I'll be open to listening to any other council's, uh, opinion on that.
Yeah, I think we don't, I don't, I personally don't wanna have a city engineer on retainer either like that. I mean, go do it on a project-by-project basis, I guess, is what I'm seeing.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with Brian also. I, I think we've been getting along by just mine over the years.
Okay. Everybody good with it? Would we do, we, we don't need a motion or anything on that then?
Just no action taken.
Just no action, Brian, okay? I think we're just gonna keep it the way we've been doing it. Okay? All right. Um, moving down to item D, request of Randall C. Furry, Stephen Chambers. Kenny, you got an update on that?
Uh, no, I really don't. Uh, this was tabled at the last meeting, and I, I guess I really don't know the, the reason why we tabled it. Um, you know, a, a former resident sent a check. They wanted a bronze plaque placed out at Stephen Chambers. The amount they sent the check for wasn't enough to even cover the plaque, so, you know, at that time, we tabled it. I guess I don't know, uh, if there's some further discussion needed or something like that. Maybe we were wondering whether or not the city wanted to chip in the, the remaining amount needed to get the plaque, but, uh, I guess I really don't recall why it was left the way it was.
What, what did you figure, Kenny? $300 for a, a?
I, I think, my, my thought was at the time, you know, in order to put it up in a place where it won't get vandalized, it would have to be of a big enough size that it could be legible from the ground. I wanted to put it up on the eve of, or up in the gable end of the building, so that kids couldn't just destroy it. Those, those bronze plaques scratch real easy if you picked up a rock or anything like that. And I think you're just asking for vandalism if you don't get it out of reach in order to get a plaque of that size with the size lettering we need for the project. It's more than the, uh, citizen donated, so I, I really don't know where we wanna go from there.
I think one of the questions, Kenny, was actually who owns that property? And can we even do anything with it on the building itself? Um, to, you know, I don't, I, I'm not sure who owns the building.
Minnesota Power.
Minnesota Power does.
So it's not even our building.
So for us to put something up without following through with, uh, the actual owner, I think, was part of why we tabled it last time.
Okay. Would, would you guys like me to reach out to somebody with Minnesota Power and find out if, if they would like to do it, and then whether Minnesota Power feels the need to, to, uh, chip in on a memorial plaque, or, or whether the city wants to? I, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm not against it.
I think that's a good idea. Can you reach out? It's their building. Tell them what happened and see what their thoughts are on it. Come back to it.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Everybody good with that?
That's an excellent idea.
Okay.
Say, Becky, can you refresh my memory? What was the amount the check was donated?
Hundred dollars.
Yeah, a hundred dollars, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we move to item E, full-time paramedic position, Director Olmstead and EMT program tuition. Mel?
Yeah. So, first of all, first of all, um, you had me come up with those, um, job descriptions. Did everyone get a copy of those? So the position we have, um, available right now, that we already have in our budget, is for the, uh, Assistant Director. And that, we currently don't have a full-time Assistant Director. So what I was asking for was to, um, hire a full-time Assistant Director. I also added on a, on this change in the job description, we need council approval, but I did change it minorly and added in, um, Training Officer as part of the duties. And a little bit of the, um, requirements were changed a little bit.
Everybody had a chance to, I'd like to address these one at a time here. Everybody had a chance to look at the new job description. It's just, it's basically the biggest issue is it added Training Officer, just some language in there, what they're responsible for, so.
The other thing, Mel, what are your thoughts on, I know we're only minimum education experience. Uh, right now, we have one-year active service as an EMT and one-year active as a paramedic. Would you have any problem changing that to two years?
I will, I wouldn't, but.
So I guess this is the first one we, I'd like to address this. What does the council want to do with the Assistant Ambulance Director position?
This job description was, was the old assistant job description. I just added the Training Officer portion.
Someone wanna make a motion to approve the new, uh, job description?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Oh, go ahead. Dan, I think Dan started.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve it, but I would like to change the, uh, the minimum education experience numbers on, to two years on the active service on both EMT and paramedic.
Okay. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Zins. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. So Mel, you're requesting a full-time position right now, is that correct?
Yes, I would like to post, post to this position.
Is, is there a motion to, uh, post, uh, for this position?
I'll make the motion to, uh, post this position internally.
Okay, there's a motion, uh, Counselor Peterson to post this internally. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counselor Pop. Any, any other discussion?
Is there a reason we're only doing it internally?
I just thought it'd be nice to give a shot to the ones that we already have here before, and then if we don't like, I mean, if we don't like who applies, we could always do it externally then.
Because when we did the, um, hired the, uh, Director and the Assistant, it was posted both internally and externally last time. So I'm just curious as to, should we change it up now?
I think one of the things that this council needs to do is get more consistent. When we do full-time positions, we've done water positions just in-house, we've done police just in-house. I think what really needs to happen is we need to be more consistent. One way or the other, and I'm not saying which way to go, but I'm saying when we go to full-time positions, we need, we should be consistent. But there is a motion on the floor, or in-house only, and with support. Any other discussion?
The only thing I would add to that, Chris, is when we posted internally with all those other positions, it's because it's in contract language with the union. And this isn't a contract. That's only, I'm just putting it out there for information.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I, I agree with Dave. I think we should post it internally and externally, but let's see how the vote goes. It is what it is, I mean.
We've never had anyone externally apply for this position in the past, so it doesn't really matter.
Well, the one comment I'll make is, is, is Counselor Peterson, um, would post, I, I'm in favor of posting it in-house. And if this council doesn't agree with who posted in-house, well, then we would post out, out to the public, so. Um, any, any other discussion?
The internal posting then would be like effective tomorrow, and then for the normal, like, seven to 10 days, whatever's in their, uh, union contract?
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. Okay, so.
And Becky, could I just interject something to there? The, the, this position really is not, it's not a, well, I, um, and I don't know if that's really a unionized contract. I think it's a, it's a, it's a management contract or part of the management team, so I don't really know if there's any language in there about postings.
That's what I need to check on, right. I wasn't sure. Uh, we should have a.
Whatever, whatever, whatever the standard internal posting timeframe has been in the city historically, that it typically has been governed by the ASME contract. But, you know, whatever that standard is, but just so we're clear on the record here, that this is not governed by union contract language.
Okay.
Right.
Good. Okay. Mel, what else? Do we have else on here for tonight then?
Um, well, the full-time paramedic position is basically, that's budget, that's budget tops. But I made the job description, so I gave them to you, so you can be prepared. I will ask for a full-time position every year, so you may get tired of me asking, but it's going to keep happening, so you'll just have it handy for when I ask.
Okay, all right.
So the other two are basically budget items.
And then what were, were, did we talk at the last meeting about the, uh, cleaning up some, uh, casual paramedics and, and firefighter paramedics? What was that about?
Um, well, we have like three different job descriptions here. And so like right now, Cody is the only firefighter paramedic we have. Um, it, what initially was Josh, Cody and I, but Josh is no longer with us, and now I'm here, so Cody is the only one left in that position. Um, we don't have any technical part-time people, and then the rest are casuals. So I just like to clean up job titles. I, I think we can do away with firefighter paramedic positions. The reason those were created was to try to get that grant. That never happened, and it costs us thousands of dollars every year to apply for. Um, so I would just assume everyone be a part-time paramedic. And I'd like to throw in a, uh, minimum requirement of hours to sign up monthly for 24 hours.
And Mayor, I think one of the things we talked about before was, was actually having kind of a committee. And maybe it would be, uh, like the Personnel Committee. And, you know, we would get together and kind of go through those job descriptions, because obviously the other thing we have to look at as well are the, some of the statutory thresholds under the public sector, uh, labor law on, uh, you know, how many hours of, of, per week they work and that type of thing. So I think it was a matter of, it was a matter really of getting together as a committee, going through those job descriptions, and then looking at what the actual hours are. So we still, we do still need to do that.
Okay, and I know Becky has sent out, uh, Becky did send out last week some dates on that, and, and I guess we're gonna have to, Mitch, because I do want you at that meeting. So if you could give Becky some dates, uh, this week here does not work for me at all, but, you know, next week or the week after or something, let's get that, and then, and then hopefully we can get that job description cleaned up for budget times, so. Okay? Anything else on this?
I, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Were we gonna talk, whoops, sorry, were we gonna talk about the, the, what, the tuition thing for EMTs?
Yep. Yeah, we were.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. What's that, Becky? What's that, Melanie?
So, right, right, I guess in the past, that we didn't know about, um, EMT onlys did get their tuition paid. The last, um, the last couple of years, we kind of were not paying for EMT onlys to get their, um, schooling paid for. We were only hiring people that were already EMTs. Um, if we hire a firefighter EMT, they were getting both their fire training and their EMT training paid for. So, um, I think we were just gonna go back to paying for EMT training.
Anybody got any discussion on that?
I guess I have a question regarding that, Mel, and I know I haven't checked with you. Have we had any applications? I, I know we advertise in the paper for EMTs and paramedics. Is anything materialized from that?
I haven't, I, I heard of one person that may, may apply. Um, I have not gotten any application from that person yet, but I do have one that applied last year that I've been hanging on to. And I told her, you know, if anything changed, we'd call her. So I, I do have one application for EMT only that does not have the training.
Did, is the deadline pressed?
My question is this, we pay for EMT training. Um, can we put a time period that they have to remain with the department for us to reimburse or pay for that? You know what I mean? I, to, to go, I know like Mel said, we hired, the ones we've hired have already had training. But if we have somebody that wants to join the department and gets on the EMT, gets a training, and then doesn't become active within the department, we're out a lot of money in training costs. And I wish, I would hope there would be some type of stipulation we could put in there to, you know, hold them accountable, at least for a time period that they would be obligated to be on the department.
Mitch, any other thoughts on that? Mitch?
Uh, Mayor and Council, yeah, that's, that's perfectly fine when you, uh, when you make an offer letter to one of those, uh, individuals, you can put that as a, you know, as a, as a stipulation in the offer letter, that one of the conditions is that for the value of the training that they're gonna receive, that they make a commitment to give a minimum timeframe of service and employment to the city. they make a commitment to give a minimum timeframe of service and employment to the city. And if they fail to fulfill that condition, they, uh, they have a contractual obligation to reimburse the city for the value of their training. And that is actually pretty common. So we, we can easily add that to an offer letter that we would make to those individuals that we're hiring in that process.
My.
What's a, what's a reasonable timeframe? I mean, that you would want them to be employed. Is it half a year, a year, that type of thing? Uh, you just have to make that decision.
I'm, I'm kind of along the lines of we pay for the class and that we could put a stipulation, is it two years? You gotta be an active member. And if they're an active member for two years, at that point, we could pay them their hourly wage for the class they took. So we won't pay for like, once they finish a class, I, I think we should withhold that $10 an hour or whatever it is that we give them until they fulfill that, whatever that year, two, one year, two year, three year mark. And if they get, be an active member for X amount of time, then they'll get their payment for their training.
That's a really good idea. I like that, Brian.
But are they, are they employed by the city when they're getting the training?
Yeah, we pay $10 an hour for all the training.
But if it's required training that they have to go to as part of their employment, you have to pay it for, you have to pay them for it. Because you, your wage, you know. Well, if they're an employee of the city and you're requiring them to go through a mandated training, you have to pay them, you have to pay them some compensation for that. It would be a violation. It potentially would be a violation of the wage and hour laws.
Okay. It made sense in my head.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think it would be, I think it would be a little, that might be a little complicated and it, and it potentially would violate the wage and hour laws if you did it that way.
What's the EMT training cost, Mel, to become an EMT? What's that training cost?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head. It's been years since I've actually signed the papers, putting someone through it. Um, it's around 3,000, I think between two and three, 2,500 and 3,000, somewhere along those lines.
So it sounds like to me is we could put a stipulation if they don't stay for a certain period of time, they'd have to pay back that tuition reimbursement. Now that would be okay.
That's, that's typically what, what, uh, fire departments and ambulance services will do. Uh, they can put that stipulation in. Yeah.
Mel, any recommendation on how long?
I'd say two years.
Two years?
I agree 100%. Two years seems to be a fair number. So.
Okay. If I could get a motion.
Two years, then I think you're gonna have somebody that's gonna stick around and, and help. So.
Can I get that as a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins to, uh, put a stipulation in, we will pay for the EMT training. They have to stay for two years. If not, they have to reimburse us for the cost of training. Is that correct, Dave?
Yep.
Support?
I'll support that.
Support by Counsel Peterson. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. Motion carries.
Can I say one more thing? And I forgot to bring it up. What happens if someone, we pay, we, we hire them, they take the class, they don't pass. We're not going to hold them liable.
I was just thinking that, but if they don't pass, there's no way they can give us two years anyway. So I think it'd be just a wash. Unless we make them reimburse us something for not passing.
I mean, that's, that's my biggest concern is, you know what, someone's giving it a good 100% effort and just can't pass a test. I have a hard time penalizing that person. I really do.
We, we've had it happen also. And it, and it is frustrating for that person. So it'd be like a double punishment.
I mean, my understanding of the motion was that if, if they become successfully licensed because we've paid for their training to be, uh, successfully licensed, we want them to give us at least two years of service. If they fail to do that and they, they take the training, the value of the training we provided and they go elsewhere and use that training to go elsewhere into the job market, that's fine. That's their right to do it. But they need to reimburse us for the, for the training. I, I didn't think the motion was, I mean, I, I thought it only covered if you actually pass it and get the value of the training.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that, Mitch. That's all.
No, it, it, no, it is good. I mean, I, but I think that would be my understanding is if somebody was not able to pass and really didn't get the full value of the training and did not acquire that marketable skill uh, or license, then we wouldn't, I don't think we would impose that, that penalty on them.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to City Hall project. Kenny, Kenny Snetziger. That's, uh, 8F.
Yep. So we, uh, had put out the, uh, project, SEH had sent it out to five local contractors asking for a quote on the project. Uh, all of them were either too busy, not interested. We got zero quotes back. We then reached out a little bit further, uh, thought of different people we could send it to. The original contractor who built the City Hall building was Lency Enterprises out of Virginia. We had Brian Bergstrom from, from SEH forward them a, uh, set of plans. They came, looked at it. I actually had met with them, uh, talked to them about a few of the, the items of the project. They did turn in a quote of, uh, well, I guess Becky can read off the quote if she'd like. Um, but they, they did put in a quote, so I guess I don't know if we want to award it. I did do some follow-up, um, just asking a timeframe. I spoke to Mike Ralston today with Lency. Um, he's thinking a start time around September 1st. He was concerned though about, uh, times of completion for it, only because there's some brickwork involved and he's still waiting to hear back about availability of brick. That was also another topic I talked to, uh, Masabi Masonry about Keith Johnson, when I met him there at City Hall. He, he, he was confident he could get the brick. It was just a matter of how long. Um, he would possibly be one of the subcontractors on the project for Lency. Um, the other thing was some door frames. Um, the, the guys from Lency's didn't quite understand why SEH spec'd a certain size frame. And, uh, so I tried reaching out to Brian Bergstrom today to get some clarification on that. Cause it was something they thought may hold up the project. Um, and I did not receive a return call from Brian as of this meeting. So I, I am still going to follow up on that, see if it's something that we can change. A- apparently an eight-inch door frame is real common. They spec'd a 10-inch, which is uncommon and, and would have to be special ordered and, and timeline was unsure. But they did say a, a start time of, uh, September 1st, they estimated. And I don't think it's a real big project. He did give me an idea on completion time, but I can't imagine it's, it's real long. He thought parts availability was going to be the only thing that slowed him down from completing it.
Okay. And Becky, weren't you saying that you felt a chunk of this could be covered under COVID?
It absolutely could. Yes.
So, and, and I, you know, we still have city businesses closed and I think this would be critical to get this done while the building is closed and put the window in both for, for COVID reasons and also safety reasons for our staff. Um, the couple of incidents I've had in the last couple of years where irate citizens walking right up, pounding the table, pounding their fists at, at city staff I'm not very happy with. So I think this is a great idea. I'm very comfortable with it, with Lency doing, building the building. I think it's, it's a good fit. So other council, uh, discussion?
Just, what was the original, uh, budgeted number that we had?
If I remember right, it was like 35 or 40,000.
I thought it was 40,000.
Yeah.
I don't have any facts, but it was close.
We're in the ballpark and if we can use some of that COVID money towards this, I think it would be a good idea.
And can I get a motion to approve this, uh, uh, project?
I'll make a motion to approve the project for the, uh, City Hall.
Motion by Counselor Zins. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Segler. Uh, roll call, please.
And Mayor, I'll just add that their quote was 46,200 dollars.
Correct.
Which should probably be a part of the.
Yep.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vreeland?
Yes. All right. Moving to, uh, item G Fisherman's Point Campground Restroom Project, uh, Kenny?
Yeah. Um, so as you know, we all, uh, or you all know, we applied for the DNR grant, uh, trying to move forward restroom project that, uh, didn't go through. Since then, we've been left kind of hanging, wondering what to do. Um, I did meet with, uh, Keith Johnson from Masabi Masonry and Matt Royce from Birch Creek Builders. They were primarily the two that built the last bathroom building in 2015. Um, I, I met with both of them, showed them the plans that have been drawn up by TKDA. Um, you know, the, the, the big holdup here was numbers. Um, the, you know, for, for grant purposes, uh, TKDA had had a builder out of Superior give us a, a rough quote, which was over $500,000 to build this bathroom building. The last bathroom that was built in 2015, Becky gave me a folder, um, with all the expenditures Floyd had kept track of. Ballpark at 246, I want to say, or 264. Um, both Matt and Keith were confident that this building, that labor costs haven't changed that much. Masonry costs, cement, et cetera, building materials. They were both confident with the, uh, with the prices of everything right now that this new building could be built for ballpark at the same price. Um, you guys had budgeted 180,000, uh, in architect fees and engineering fees so far. We've spent 22,000 roughly. We're at like 158 left in that. They both felt that, uh, you know, we could possibly move forward with this project in phases. Um, possibly getting foot up, uh, cement slab, poured block walls up, possibly weather tight this year. And then budget next year for the finishing of the, the project, you know, the interior fixture, water boilers, et cetera. Uh, you know, some, some more planning may have to be done in order to do it this way to make sure we don't get the cart in front of the horse, if you will. Um, I, I know we have spent the money already getting the, uh, water and sewer to the site. Um, so you'd think that would save us, you know, a, a large chunk of money since we spent roughly a hundred thousand dollars doing that. However, this site that this bathroom will be at also is going to include a grinder pump assembly that isn't already there. So there will be some added costs with that, you know, to compare it to the cost we spent on the last building. Uh, just looking for feedback, you know, the, both of them, them that I talked to, uh, had, had said, you know, the simpler you make this project, the less it's going to cost. Keeping general contractors, you know, not hiring a general contractor, for instance, will save you whatever 15% on the overall project cost, even just how much engineering is even needed. Um, you know, to complete this project. We have the plans. We move forward with it. On the plans, there are things that we could, uh, eliminate. Keith Johnson did have some, some good ideas when he looked at the plans with me, things that we could eliminate from the building. Um, and it would still be structurally fine, but would save us some money, uh, moving a couple of doors and eliminating some sidewalks. You know, he had some real good ideas on saving costs. Um, so I, I, I don't see why we wouldn't, you know, want to move forward with this project with the money we have budgeted this year and try and complete it next year. I, I know I did speak quick to, uh, Dan Pop today about it, uh, since he's the liaison and just mentioned this to him. You know, if, if we, if we reapply for the grant again next year, we're going to wait until March to apply, wait until June to hear back. If we get turned down, we'll be sitting in the same boat next year in July, wondering how to move forward with the bathroom. Um, yet, you know, so i- if you choose to budget more money for next year, so we have the money to build it ourselves. Understand if you want to try and move forward with what monies we have this year and add to it for next year. And that might be part of our talks and budget time. Great. Uh, give me your feedback, I guess.
Dan?
I can go first there. Yeah. Kenny and I talked about this quite extensively this afternoon and, uh, I agree wholeheartedly with, with the recommendation to, to move forward with trying to get as much done this fall with the money we already have budgeted. We may be able to even look into with the COVID thing and the extra monies that we got is to upgrade the ventilation system that is in there because that's one of the complaints that Al had that he didn't feel comfortable going in to clean the bathrooms and, and you know, we may be able to utilize some of that money, COVID money towards the cost of building. So, so I think we definitely should add it, uh, through the process, load it out and hopefully some of that work can get completed this fall and, you know. Hopefully get it weather tight and, and then we'll budget what we feel we need in next year's budget to finish it. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Anybody else?
Dan, uh, just a question on that ventilation. Would we be able to get that done this year or in time, uh, in the timeline that we have to spend that COVID money?
I believe there's a stipulation in there that if you have plans for items that they aren't paid for within that timeframe, and Becky, you could elaborate on that for me. But I, I think I saw something in both the monies that Melanie got and that the other, the other allocation that we got, that there was some, some wiggle room on that. Both because of some of the items that may be ordered would not be available till a later date or even till after the first of the year. But I, I think if you justify what it's going to be used for, I think that's acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of complaints, Dave, that people wanted stuff and didn't think they could get it by the first of the year. So they have softened on that. As long as you order it, uh, it, it will be eligible. So.
Uh, that's good. I mean, it's kind of tough.
If I can add one thing, the, the plans that TKDA has drawn up right now, um, do have a full HVAC system in the building. Uh, we kind of questioned as to why the old building didn't have that. The new one does. Um, you know, they, they just, they just drew it up that way, felt it, you know, would be overkill if nothing else, but it should be in there. Um, talking to Matt Royce, he was aware of the, uh, condensation or steam problems in this one, you know? And he, he felt there are several ways of, of alleviating that i- in the new building. Um, we could, you know, put in more screened windows, for instance, instead of glass block that, that would allow fresh air movement. He was also aware of some other, rather than just a basic homeowner type bathroom fan in the ceiling of each stall, that there was a, a better setup. He was aware of that. Um, wasn't a full-blown HVAC system, but moved a lot more CFM of air and they could also be installed on humidistats. So it wasn't, uh, the full-blown 30 some thousand dollar HVAC system that TKDA had put in the plans. But, uh, something that would help with the, with the process. But you know, if, if COVID money's paying for it and the plans already include that, it, it really doesn't matter to me.
The, the big problem I have with this is I think Kenny's going to have to be the general on this because we still have to get quotes. Let's say for the concrete work, I don't know what was the quote for the, what was the estimated concrete work? 70, 80,000 dollars, something like that, if I remember.
77,000 in green cost, yes.
So you're going to have to get two quotes for that. You're going to have to get two quotes for the woodwork or the building part of it. Uh, you, you're going to have to get electrician, plumber, you know, all of that. Uh, we're going to have to get two quotes to make this legal. Is that correct, Attorney Brunfeld?
That's correct. You just, you want to, you want to make at least a record to show that you attempted to go out and get two or more quotes on those items, correct?
Say, Mitch, I, I have a question.
That doesn't mean you have to get two quotes. It's just that you have to, you made a good faith effort to, to go out and try to get two or more quotes. Okay. You'll find that, that contractors in various areas are so busy that they may not even be willing to provide you a quote, but at least you reached out to them and you have a record of it, trying to get more than two or more quotes. Right?
Right. And now, when it comes down to getting the quotes now, say, say 77,000 dollars worth of masonry work. Can that be broken down into smaller phases like, uh, uh, footings and the slab is one portion of it? The block walls are another portion of it. I mean, can this be broken down any smaller to, to avoid, you know, the, the number ceiling for quote limits?
Well, I mean, i- if there, if you can show that they're truly segmented portions of the project and intended to be that way, I think you can. You know, uh, so, um.
You know, I just went by the total cost of the whole project or if, you know, certain portions of the project, you know, you hire a roofer, he gives you a quote for this much. In the end, you end up with a 250,000 dollar building, but it was broken down so many ways that.
Yeah, you can do that. I. Yeah, you can do that, I, yeah, but I mean, it's, you know, absolutely, although all the different parts of the project can be separately. You know, you can do that if you're gonna, I think basically the concept you're talking about is basically having you generally yourself. And and then, but but I think the the mayor's point is well taken, and that is on each one of those different areas, you need to at least strive to get uh two or more quotes.
Okay.
And also, again, you don't have to actually secure them, you just have to show that you made an effort to get them.
Okay.
So counsel, do you want to, uh, I guess I'm looking for, do you wanna give Kenny permission to get quotes to bring back to the next council meeting? Or if we have them earlier, we could always call a special meeting or have it at one of the budget meetings, so with these time constraints?
If you need a motion to that effect, I would make that.
Okay, uh motion by Counselor Pop, you have Kenny get quotes to bring back to the council for uh for approval to move this project forward. Support by Counselor Segler. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Moving to item I, application for payment number two and change order number two A, uh Emily.
Hi, everybody. Um so tonight you have in front of you the um it would be the second pay application for the um the Storm Sewer Street Project. And also change order two A, which is the change order that I had mentioned, um we had discussed earlier in the summer regarding the changes for the storm sewer. Um just an update on the project really quick, I know Kenny talked about it already, but um they they're progressing on the storm sewer now, all of the sanitary sewer and water work is completed. Um so they are progressing, I think by the time we're talking at the next meeting, they will be completely done with all of the storm sewer work and will be working on putting the streets back together. Other than that, I will, I'll just open it up to questions that you guys may have.
Anybody got any questions for Emily?
Yeah, Emily, if if you could just elaborate, again, I know that the meeting's going lengthy, but items one eleven and one twenty-four, those were the the two that were the most significant dollar amounts, and I know the the item one eleven is the the additional dig from four foot to six foot. And then on item number one twenty-four, it says due to changes required to the storm sewer design, the overall depth of structures was increased resulting in additional costs. So could you just refresh my memory, what was all involved there?
Yeah, so um so basically at the start of the project, some some field work was done, some verification work, um it was discovered that the storm sewer was deeper than what we had originally shown on the plans, and we had to make some adjustments in order to um keep it where it was so that we did not run into other utilities and have uh conflicts underground.
All right, then the costs are all obviously in line, so thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion tonight to approve Masabi two businesses. Now, the question I have, Emily, is the five seventy-two, three fifty-three seventy-six, oh, that includes the change order, okay.
Yes, correct.
So we are looking for a motion to approve payment number two, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Someone make, wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Pop, is there support? I'll support that. Okay, Counselor Peterson supported it. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland? Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to motion carries, moving on to new business, um Rachel account, Northwoods Land Office, Leeds Road. First of all, the Leeds Road, um I looked on the plat on that, and I don't believe they're platted completely yet, so I think we're gonna have to have some time. Some of the owners of the Leeds lots wanna buy the lot behind them, and I, and I don't know what what uh, how we should move forward with that on making sure they're platted properly. Do we need to hire somebody to come in and and do that, or what?
And Rachel is not on the meeting tonight, here.
Okay, well, I don't think there's a real push on that one right there. I think we can, I think we can just move past that. I'll see if I can find out about that, and and maybe Rachel will know by looking at it if it's, if those are already platted properly or not, so. And then item number two is purchase agreement, Raymond Royce wants to purchase tract N and tract O for uh fifteen hundred dollars, those are the two of the uh sites out on six-six-six for uh storage buildings that Rachel's in charge of uh selling. And then there's also um Eric Cromley wants to buy one out there, so do we need to do these separately?
They should be separate, um also, they're both for asking price, so um it would be good to get some movement out on those storage lots, too. The purchase agreements were in your packet.
Yep. So take a motion for the first one, for Raymond Royce to buy tract N and O for it's three thousand dollars or the asking price of fifteen hundred dollars per lot.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins, support.
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Segler, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Then the second one will take a motion for Eric Cromley to to purchase tract L for the fifteen hundred dollars asking requirement or purchase agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support.
I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Segler, roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. All right, moving to nine B, electronic sign guidelines. I I personally wanna thank Library Director Sue Sowers for the work on this sign. She knows it's my little pet project and and it has not been very easily being worked on yet, so thank you, Sue, for your effort on that. Um I like this electronic side guidelines, I think it's a, it's a great way to get moving on it. Anybody else got any comments on it? If no one else has comments on it, we will uh make a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Zins, roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Sue. Um going to item C, Gritter Construction Security Pledge, uh wastewater treatment, uh Brian. You're on mute, Brian.
Try that again, thank you. Uh Attorney Brunfeld had talked about this a little bit earlier, uh regarding the wastewater, is my internet connection bad?
You're okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Um and uh so in in lieu of providing retainage on the project, uh Gritter has asked to use securities, which is allowed by state statute in which they would pledge bonds into a retainage. And so basically, instead of retaining tenant, that's five percent would be put into a secure account in the city's name, and it cannot be released um until the end the project. Um and so we've done this with them on on other projects and um the city, i- it's allowed by state statute, you do not have to do it. Uh but the contractors allow them, so it's just a different form of holding retainage. Any questions?
I've done them in the past. Motion to uh approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Pop, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Motion carries. Item nine D, this is to a a contract with NTS Services to do uh concrete and other masonry and field laboratory testing. Uh this is, this is standard procedure, you bring in a third party to do the testing, nobody that's you know, works for either the engineering company or the contractor, it's a third party to uh do all of the the proper uh required testing, so um I think it's a straightforward uh contract, Brian?
Yes, and I think Attorney Brunfeld had also looked at the contract, and I believe the city has done quite a bit of work with NTS. I don't know if there's contractual issues that need to be addressed before.
It looks good, Mayor. Okay. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
Motion by Counselor Segler, support. Support by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Item E, under new business, uh we got Jake got a couple of quotes to uh paint the exterior, if you've driven by the water plant, it definitely needs some paint. This was budgeted for, correct?
Yes. So the quote that I'm gonna recommend goes a little over what we have budgeted or budgeted, but uh I think uh it's the right choice. After reaching out to the Swanson and Youngdale, I didn't feel that they'd give us a quality product.
So which one are you recommending?
I'm recommending Fresh Blast. So they've done work first before at the wastewater plant, and it's held up pretty good, so.
It's considerably more.
Yeah, so is the third bid as well. But uh I I think they're gonna do a better job for us. Um initially, when Floyd looked at having this done, it was about forty-five thousand, and just with the increase over the year, it jumped up about two thousand. Um ultimately, this is a council's decision, though, that's just my opinion.
You know, where is the Swanson and Youngdale lot of?
The quote we have in front of you, the address is Duluth.
Okay.
I agree with Jake, I've I've kind of been texting back and forth with Jake and looking at uh what the base bid includes and the uh the prep work that's gonna be done, the uh the actual two coats of acrylic finish, uh I think it would be well worth it to go. I think we'd be, wouldn't be very happy with the the job that we got done with the the lower quote. So I think we should uh, I agree with with Jake on which direction to go on this.
Attorney Brunfeld?
Yeah, I mean, if if you have a, if you have a a basis that there's um some extra things that Fresh Blast is proposing to do or a better product, or maybe an extra coat of something that they're putting on that Swanson and Youngdale is not proposing to put on, uh then, yeah, you would have a basis to go with the higher quote. There are some real, you know, qualitative differences between uh you know, what the specifics of what Fresh Blast is proposing versus what Swanson and Youngdale are proposing. But if if they're really proposing, you know, really the identical process uh product and, you know, they're both proposing to basically do the same, same types of materials, then you typically would have to go with the low quote. But again, if there are some qualitative differences between what Fresh Blast is proposing to do versus Swanson and Youngdale, then you would have a, you would, on a factual basis, to award a higher quote. You should make a finding of that, though, based, and I don't have the quotes in front of me, I didn't, I don't get the full packet. Uh so I would have to, you know, we would have to look at that, but uh but I, if you have, if you can see from what you're comparing there, that there are some real qualitative differences between the two, then you just wanna make a a record of that or have it reflected in the minutes.
Well, two two of the things I see right away is, is the the higher one puts on two acrylic finish coats where the where the other one only puts on one, and they also prep and blasting exterior wall coatings to ninety percent removal or better. And the other one just says existing may should be power washed and hand scraped.
Well, there you go, I mean, you know, the, absolutely, Mayor, I mean, you've 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 hit the nail on the head, that's that's exactly a uh two or three items right there where there are significant differences in in what the quarters are proposing to do. So in that instance, then, Mayor, it really is council discretion.
Okay.
I misspoke, Fresh Blast is um out of White Bear Lake.
Okay, and Jake, you said you've dealt with them in the past?
Yeah, I've worked with them in the past, they're really professional, haven't had any problems with them, so.
I'll I'll make a motion, I'm looking for a motion then to approve Fresh Blast at forty-seven thousand four hundred.
I'll make that.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support.
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Pop, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eglar?
Yeah.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes. Item F, Water Treatment Plant Replaced Double Main Doors.
So in the basement area um of the water plant, we have a double set of doors. Uh the frame of it's deteriorating pretty good, and the doors don't even close all the way anymore. We have them held together with a budget board. Uh we do have a garage door behind that, but that also serves as a point of heat loss, too. So we've been putting insulation in between the garage door and the double doors every winter to try and prevent heat loss. Something I'd like to do, if it doesn't happen this year, I'll try for it next year again, but uh them doors are getting pretty bad down there.
And the the one quote is from three thou- for three thousand six dollars eighty-five cents, that's from uh Poppis Machine?
Uh yeah, uh George is looking up quotes for us, unfortunately, he didn't get any more information on this, he quote in time for the council meeting, so I'll have to reach out to him tomorrow, 'cause he was supposed to get me warranty information and what the difference is between the two prices.
If if the council's okay, maybe Jake can bring that back to the next meeting with some more update, 'cause the one question I have here, it says labor's not included, so. You know, we could.
Yeah, part of that.
Go ahead.
That's 'cause we're not sure what we're gonna run into when we start tearing that door frame out. So is the concrete deteriorated there or what, so? But uh I can get you a more detailed description for the next meeting, definitely.
That'd be perfect. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, the other one question I do have for Jake, I know we had emailed or text on this, and I know Jake, you had said that there was fifty thousand dollars in the budget for, was that other equipment?
Yeah, it's a budget budget item, I missed, it's other equipment, uh it's been untouched this year. I don't know what Floyd had been using that for in the past, I just know it's there, it's available for this, um you would definitely cover it, but.
The only question I have, Jake, is I'm looking at the last printout I had, and we didn't have anything in this year's budget for other equipment, the numbers I'm looking at.
Okay, well, I can get with you tomorrow and show you what I'm seeing.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think we're good then. Anybody else got anything else?
I, Mayor, one thing before, uh, we adjourn, one thing I missed with the campground. Uh, what I would like Becky to do is to add to one of the budget meetings in August, or maybe it might take a couple of them. Uh, I'm going to ask Patty and Al to make some recommendations for the seasonal sites for next year. And I would like us to be able to discuss that during our budget meetings.
Okay, perfect. I think it's a good idea. Okay. Anything else?
Adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Counselor Segler, support.
Support.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Counselor Segler?
Yes.
Counselor Pop?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Vrelin?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Good night and remember EDA right now. Okay. Go back to your emails. You'll find it.